We have early dismissal scheduled August twenty third through the the third. I'm going to be discussing that in my report because we do need to make a modification. We've done this historically at one twenty five for the first two weeks, but we will discuss that further. Labor Day, we're closed September sixth. And our Board of Education meets in September here in our Performing Arts Center at six thirty. That's September twenty first and mid-quarter progress reports are September twenty fourth. Mr. President, for your information, the information of the board members, we will continue to do our open houses on Zoom. And I'm going to enjoy going to each one of the schools, greeting the parents personally along with the principals. And then because we have the technology, Mr. Evans, to come from each classroom, each parent will have the opportunity to to visit with their own teacher in the classroom. But it's the best way for us to do it. And so we will be giving you individual dates, but they will not be in-person dates. They will be Zoom. And so that is our opening, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. We have audience to visitors pertaining to agenda items only. Hearing now, we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Mr. Bean.
Move that we approve the consent as named in August seventeen, two thousand one, and every item contained therein.
Second?
It's been moved as second discussion.
Mr. President, if I could, you will see that we've hired a lot of quite a few new employees. We do ask the question, as you come to us, are you vaccinated? We're not sure of the protocol for that, but since no one is pushing back against us, then everyone that you would vote on tonight that you're bringing, Mr. Leatherwood, into the family is vaccinated. And so I think that that's a relief to the principals. Just like to bring to your attention Mr. Michael Stewart, teacher at the Illinois U C A resignation. He's actually not resigning. His career goal was to become a high school coach. And so I think he may be somewhere in the building now coaching track and field or whatever. So that is his goal. Unfortunately, you do see that there are three teachers who gave us what is legally and to me morally insufficient notice because of the fact that we're on the verge of opening and we're asking the board to take as you would normally do four percent penalty. And then our attorney, Mr. Robert Hall, who is present, is going to make the decision as to whether we go forward to put limitations on their certification. That is the end of my comments, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. At this time, we will now entertain the superintendent's report. Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bean? Mrs. Gordon?
Aye.
Mrs. McCray? Dr. Leatherwood?
Aye.
Mr. Simkins?
Aye.
Now we entertain superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Simkins. We'd like to begin, first of all, recognizing the CFO to District One Sixty Two, Craig Inglot, and he will discuss the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two tentative budget. Good evening, Craig.
Good evening, Dr. Davis. Good evening, Board of Education. It is that time of year again. Seems like we just adopted the two thousand twenty-one amended budget. Here we are looking at the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. So in your packet in tab five, what you will see is a memo from me outlining just the timeline of the budgeting process. Nothing new here. This evening, you'll be reviewing the tentative budget. It will be it will be on display, not only for residents to come here and pick up a copy, but also it will be on the District One Sixty Two website effective on Friday. And it will remain there for thirty days. So at the September board meeting, you will then be well, first we will have a public hearing to start the meeting on the budget, just like we do every year. And then the board will be asked to adopt that budget. So I'm just looking at an overview of the budget. I want to start by saying you'll what you're going to see, and we'll talk about this a little bit later, is significant increase in expenditures over the prior year. And the main driver of that is if you think about it, last year, the district spent significantly less than it normally would because of obvious reasons, food service, transportation, a number of items related to that we typically would have when when we're full in person, the district just didn't have last year. And so when you look at the increases in expenditures, expenditures, a lot of it is the result of that. Also, you'll see some additional staff positions in the budget, and that's to make sure that the district has low enough class sizes to accommodate social distancing. There's lower state revenue from transportation reimbursement. Again, last year, we had very little transportation expenditures. And the state of Illinois reimburses districts for those expenditures the following year, which would be this upcoming school year. And so the revenue for transportation reimbursement, as expected, is significantly lower. Kind of an anomaly this year is property tax revenue. It's up significantly in this budget. That's not because property tax revenue actually went up. It's because the county pushed the due date for the second half property taxes this year to October first. Typically, it's earlier than that. And so what that means is that the second half property taxes that we would have collected and recognized in the two thousand twenty-one school year is actually being pushed into the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So it's not that there's any additional taxes coming in for that year. It's just a shift in terms of the timing of it, of when those taxes are recognized. But overall, it's a good operating outlook for this year, and I'll show you that in a second. So the overall budget is a two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar deficit, which sounds not good, but it really is fine. What that deficit really represent, it represents for the most part is the closeout of the construction fund. So I, in fact, on the bill list that you just approved for the consent agenda, there was a number of items for construction contractors related to the gymnasium. And that was closeout of those funds. Of course, the money for that project came in in a prior year. And so you have expenditures in this budget related to that, and the revenue actually came in a prior year. That's why you see that deficit related to the construction fund. But if you look at the operating funds, those are the funds that the state of Illinois looks at to determine what a school district's health is. And we do have a surplus in the operating funds. In addition to that, we also have a significant amount of contingency money in there, which we'll talk about in a second. I would project that assuming all assuming the budgets stays the way it is, that the district would see again a financial profile score ranking of financial recognition, which is the highest score which the district has been receiving for several years. So looking at operations, there's forty-two point seven million dollars in revenue, forty-two point six million dollars in expenditures with a slight surplus of about ninety thousand dollars. And again, that's just the operations funds. So this is gives you a breakdown of operations revenue, and what you'll see is forty-eight percent of the projected operations revenue comes from property taxes, about thirty-three percent from state funding, thirteen percent from federal, and the remainder is other local funds. You get pretty consistent with what you've seen in prior years. Again, this the slide just showing district operational expenditures, about sixty-nine percent in salaries and benefits. Purchase services represents the next largest slice, and that's really your transportation contract and food service contract for the most part. Ten percent for supplies, a small slice there for capital outlay, and then that big that other piece that really represents special education tuition. All right, some of the changes from two thousand twenty-one. So operating revenue, as I said, is up two point eight million dollars, about a seven percent increase. A lot of that is that property tax shift in terms of recognition, where we see that state funding decreasing two point four million. As I mentioned, about one point one million dollars decrease in transportation reimbursement. And if you recall, last year, the district received the second half of the property tax relief grant. That was a one-time payment, one-time revenue recognition. So that comes off this year and actually then rolls into the district's general state aid allocation going forward. On the federal side, we see about a four hundred eleven thousand dollar increase. Most of that's from national school lunch. This year, the National School Lunch Program is free for all students in District One Sixty Two regardless of income. That's a decision that the federal government made for this upcoming year, and so all students will eat for free. And the district will get the maximum reimbursement for every child that does eat. So we do see a significant increase in revenue there. The eight hundred thousand dollar decrease in the S R money doesn't mean that there's less S R money there. The district has about seven million dollars left in those S R funds to spend over the next two years. And so but we spent the district spent more last year in the area of Chromebooks and some of the construction projects related to some of the health, life, safety things that we did in the buildings. On the expenditure side, up about four point five million dollars. A lot of this salaries, of course, the the normal raises with regard to the collective bargaining agreements. The custodial, the custodians were raised up to fifteen dollars an hour to try to be more competitive in the market. And you'll see increases in custodian, substitute teachers, lunchroom staff, and other positions as well. Again, some of that related to COVID and just making sure that the district is prepared with substitute teachers, with enough teachers to accommodate social distancing, enough custodians to make sure we're doing those extra cleanings, all of that. Alongside of that, there was a five percent increase in health insurance rates. Although the benefits went up ten percent, we're using conservative budgeting estimates for those unfilled positions just in case. So I actually don't think that number will be quite as high as what it's what's in the budget. All right, a couple of the changes from last year, a one point one million increase in transportation costs. Again, we're looking at a full year of transportation versus very, I think, about thirty-five to forty percent of our students utilizing transportation for half of the year last year. Nine hundred thousand dollar increase in student meals, again, related to all students being back in person, decrease in supplies because the district purchased Chromebooks last year that did not does not need to purchase this year, and increasing utility costs. Again, having those buildings open with full staff, we anticipate those utility costs will go up. Couple miscellaneous items. All of these are construction projects that was approved by the board in prior months. And all these projects have now been completed, but two point seven million in construction. The bipolar ionization project, which is the air filtration that was put into all of the district's buildings, the bathroom renovations at the three schools, the Richmond Square roof replacement, and the closeout of the gymnasium project, all that's reflected in here. There's fifty thousand set aside for a new pickup truck with plow. That's something we'll probably be coming to back to the board with at a future date. Three hundred forty-five thousand for textbooks. The district adopted a new reading series this last summer that will be going into effect this fall. And we have a four hundred thousand dollar contingency and another one hundred thousand dollar contingency for building expenditures. So even though the the projected surplus is about ninety thousand operations, in in that is five hundred thousand dollars of contingency funds. So again, I do anticipate that number to be a little higher. Couple of things to talk about for the future. So property tax collections, the assumptions we use in here is about a ninety percent collection rate. That's that's what we've seen the past couple of years. Sometimes it dips to about eighty-nine and a half, but right around ninety percent. We're projecting seven hundred thousand dollars in refund, property tax refunds. The state did announce that it has money for the property tax relief grants. Again, this upcoming year, the district will find out in October if it is eligible for that grant again. So we'll be watching for that and coming back to you to let you know, let you know about that. And then the use of S R funds. Again, that's that federal money related to COVID. There's about seven million dollars remaining for District One Sixty Two to spend the next two years. This is the timeline which we've talked about already. Again, the budget will be on display for the public August twentieth. And the public hearing and the board vote on adoption will be at the September twenty-first board meeting. So any questions I can answer with regard to the tentative budget?
Any questions? Dave Woodman? Thank you, Miss Dean.
Thank you, Craig. The second part of of my report actually has to do with our reopening and the return of our our children to the classroom. And then our principals are all here because they have a presentation that they're going to make in terms of what we're going to do with our goal number three. But let me, first of all, talk about our pre-registration. What do we look like? I think at first, most of us in senior staff were a little concerned about what would happen when we reopen. And but in the past three weeks, parents have been coming in regularly, making appointments to register. Mr. Inglot has appointments available all day when you can come in. And you know what? I hate this because I can't see your faces, so I'm gonna have to move myself. I don't know, maybe I'm Eric is going to be disturbed with me. But I'm gonna move myself because otherwise I can't see you. That doesn't work for me. But we were concerned about our enrollment, and the community's been quiet. They really haven't said anything. The first indication we began to have that parents definitely wanted their their children to come back to school and that we were headed in the right direction, as I said, was when we started to do in-person registrations. I think some people perhaps cannot do it online. And I think also because we sent materials out March first, I don't think people are necessarily thinking about it. But enrollment has been coming in and building constantly. We're now four hundred and two students away from our goal. I think that we may even exceed our goal. And I say that because we're constantly registering students that are new to the district. And the students coming in exceed the students who are getting transfers. And so that's what I perceive. But we are on target at this point to make our our goal. And as I said, there are four hundred and two that are not registered. One thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight are registered. And so I'm happy about that. But a part of the reopening also was to us, the issue of the vaccinations. And we've talked about this many times. And so as we open, as we're on the verge of opening, what does it look like? I always pay attention to what our community says. And you know, our high school just opened. I did not know what to expect. I really didn't. We haven't seen these students in a year and a half. What we had was five hundred and ninety-two well-behaved, very excited students to come in. Couldn't wait. And they're fifty-five percent vaccinated, the students. In that, which was, I think, is magnificent. And the the high school staff is ninety-eight percent vaccinated. So they've been very, very diligent about that. But I feel confident about the one sixty-two opening because, remember, we're all one family. Many of the the students that are in our high schools also have younger brothers and sisters that are on the other side of the aisle. So when we're looking at the vaccinations of the staff of the other schools, what we're looking at is eighty percent. That's where we are now. We have sixty-four teachers that are unvaccinated. I'm sorry, sixty-nine, sixty-four total. Thirty-nine teachers, nine of which are expectant mothers. And I assume that they're following the advice of their doctors. Eight paras and secretaries, nine lunchroom and eight custodians, for a total of sixty-four that are unvaccinated as we seek to open. One of the things that we're going to be doing on August twenty-fourth, this will be our sixth, I believe, Mrs. Williams, vaccination clinic here in this building. You know, all of our rooms serve more than one purpose. So we'll be reorganizing, moving back out of the commons because we have students now into the field house. And Dr. Richard Watson and his staff of nurses will be coming here. And we will do what we did before, which is to give vaccinations to not only those who are twelve and older, but anyone in the community who would like to take either first or second shot. He brings with him Pfizer and Moderna. And so he'll be prepared to do any of that. So we'll be advertising that, and that is the twenty-fourth. Because in this building, all students are eligible, we'd like to raise that to seventy, eighty percent. I don't know about our ability to do that. It requires the parents to agree. But in one sixty-two, we're eighty percent not eligible because we're eighty percent of our students were bottom-heavy. We have more small children, many more, as Mrs. Calvin knows, than we have the older children. So the only ones that could possibly be eligible would be the seventh and eighth grade with Dr. Mays and the seventh and eighth grade with Mrs. Calvin. What we've seen in terms of registration is a huge, huge, Mrs. Parham, three and four-year-old. I have no idea why. And they're coming in in large numbers. And this this but this is good. This is a healthy thing for the community. But obviously, they're just little babies. But just keep in your mind that eighty percent of the district, unless there's some change in terms of the vaccination protocol, are not eligible. What we've been told by the CDC is that, Mr. President, January of this upcoming year, that there will be a vaccination. But I doubt seriously if we're talking about going down to the very young children. I don't see that. But that's where we are now because what we're doing is looking towards August twenty-third. And so we know that most of the children on the other side of the house are not eligible for the the vaccination. But I gave you a copy of the reopening plan. We are streaming live. Parents, please, please, please go on our website and print a copy of the reopening plan. But I will review for the benefit of the board some of the things that are can contain in the plan. First of all, you cannot step foot inside of any of our buildings without your temperature taken. So you, I'm sure, when you enter the building, we have them at all of the entrances, and that's what we do. We do have handheld, but we're kind of moving away from that. And we've ordered more of the standalone temperature takers. We understand that some people feel that it's not only the temperature, some people feel that it's the oxygen level. We really can't, we're not doctors, and we can't do that. So but we are taking the temperatures of everyone coming in to the building. Secondly, and I'm very happy about this, you know that we just finished a summer session. You know that we came off the hybrid. You're aware that we did programs at Christmas, at Black History. We did spring programs. We did all of that mask. We're going to stay masked. We believe firmly that those that are vaccinated and those that are wearing masks are safest. And that is our primary goal, that we bring our students and our children back safely. The other issue is that they're not coming into a vacuum. They're coming into an educational institution that also has teachers and others who would not need this exposure. Something I found to be very interesting, Dr. Watson shared with me, Mr. President, when he was here on July first, he said, in our state, the rate of influenza has fallen to two percent. And he believes that that is due to us wearing masks in public because you're not transmitting germs. So students come in, temperature takes taken their mask on the bus, receiving two per bus. But we'll talk about transportation a little later. And but they come into a school where all the classrooms have been reorganized due to social distancing. And we are carrying additional staff simply because we're really trying to keep, have no class larger than twenty-two. And at this point, that's the case. If, in fact, there's an influx of children at other grade levels, and of course, we don't know what's out there, then we're prepared to shift staff and to hire additional staff in order to keep the numbers where they should be. A question that a parent might have would be, what about lunch because they unmask at lunch? What we've had to do, you've been in, all of your parents, so you know, hi sweetheart. Well, that's a good thing. Hi. I mentioned lunch, you see? You mean, we have no cookies or anything over there for? But I think he would love a cookie. I really think so. But our lunchrooms now are in multiple places in the building. You're standing in one of your buildings now, and there's the lunchroom. There is no furniture there that you're accustomed to seeing. We took all of the lunchroom furniture out and their individual desks so that no one is touching anyone. And so, okay. And we also have outside of our buildings, and we're adding more. I guess you would call it tables where students who choose to go outside can have tables. But in every building, there will be a minimum of two, and some buildings, three places where we're actually serving food. Because if they're going to unmask, then we have to be extremely careful. So that's what we're looking at in all of our buildings in terms of this reorganization. Gym, gym, we're not dressing for gym. Everyone knows that if you go into our locker rooms and you undress, it is our belief that that is too much exposure. And so with their gym shoes on, students are going outside walking. They can unmask if they choose. But interesting, because you know, we have young people now, they're not unmasking. They choose not to. But that is your option if you feel that you want to unmask. All of our janitors are now work two, two additional hours per day because we're constantly cleaning, cleaning, cleaning. And even during the lunch periods, after one group moves, the lunchroom people and janitors come in and they sanitize the chair and the surface of the table before we bring the other group in. So that's another fact. Our filtration systems in all eight of our buildings, those filtration systems now contain a bio-ionization feature that filters all the air coming into the buildings. What people tell me, I don't personally have allergies, but people that do have not suffered as much simply because it's not coming in. Everybody talking about specifically COVID because we don't know that. But we do know that there's a lot in our air that bothers our eyes, our nose, et cetera. We're not really experiencing that because we've become an environment where air comes in and it's filtered before we even breathe it in. So that's another step that we've taken. Everyone is aware that in all of our schools, we have a registered nurse. You're aware that five years ago, we decided to move because children's lives are a lot more complex. Mrs. Gordon is in the school, so she knows that there are many children that have allergies. We have children now who would not have been in our facility before, but they have diabetes. We need someone that knows what they're doing in terms of monitoring that staff. So we employ eight registered nurses who are there. In your folders, in your plan, and we absolutely, parents, if you're listening, please, please, please print that entire print the entire plan. But you'll see our protocol that we're going to follow. If in fact, there's exposure, you will see our dismissal protocol, the opening ceremonies, what it is that we do with children. We're not taking field trips, we're going to reevaluate this November first. And no one has really asked me about field trips. I think if we bring the children in, they're safe and we can educate them and give them in-person education to put them on another bus and go into an environment where we have no sense of the cleanliness. Let's just be honest. That's asking too much. But we'll reevaluate this on November first. I think, and it's just my opinion, that where we are now, we're going to be in the same position in terms of COVID until January of twenty-twenty-two. That's just where we are. I'm preparing for that. In all of our buildings, we have additional masks if you need them. We have plastic gloves if you want them. And all of our classrooms, we have Plexiglas. But interesting, the teachers really are coming much closer their mask, but they're coming closer to the children. I feel that that's what they're trying to do to communicate. And they rarely see a teacher standing behind the Plexiglas, but that isn't the issue. What we have to do is to provide it so that everyone feels safe. Because we've changed since a year ago. I shared with you the unrest that we had. Unfortunately, some people resigned, they just couldn't do this. But now, I think that there's an excitement. There's a feeling that we're returning to where we almost to where we were, a new normal, certainly. But what are we as a school district if we don't have children? And so that's what I feel. Every day, it makes my life when I hear some laughter. And now I just look at the eyes because we stay masked. And I know that this is where the children belong. But those are some of the things that we're doing to make sure that the children are safe. I'd like to stop here and entertain questions before I go on because it could be something that I have not mentioned. I want to go back to my notes.
Yes, just. Just to complete the information circle, Dr. Davis, you said that if we needed to, you were prepared to hire more staff. Our buildings are prepared with space. If we need be having more children coming in, each of our buildings have adequate classroom space to expand.
Oh, we have adequate space. I remember, oh my God, it's been eight years now that we have that burst. We built additions onto all of our buildings. We can actually, we're projecting twenty-four hundred, we can house four thousand students. So yes, ma'am, we're prepared. Now, in hiring more staff, we all know that teachers are not just out there with their hands up. That is, we're on every site that there is trying to bring in additional teachers. But we're prepared to do that. And what I think that we're going to, to need, and perhaps Mrs. Calvin or some of the other principals will speak to this. The issue that we see now is not so much in terms of reading and language arts. The void seems to be from our data in summer school, seems to be math. It seems to be math. And so I recommend it to all of the principals, and we're trying to search. We need to bring in, at least in the short run, math specialists and math coordinators. Most of our teachers are trained, as you know, in school in teaching, the teaching of reading, I think they do a magnificent job of that. But if there was an area in which I absolutely know we have a deficit, it's in the area of mathematics. And I think we need to bring in the specialists to make sure that that is an area that's addressed. But questions about what I've said so far? Okay, a problem, a problem. Mr. Inglot is in charge of our transportation. And I think I've alluded to this problem before, that bus drivers, not equipment, but bus drivers. The federal government, and we're not saying that this was not a good idea, but provided unemployment compensation for a large group of people. And many of our bus drivers applied for that. And many of them have not come back to driving buses. And so we were notified today that we're down eleven buses. And so we're working on that. We're looking at two things. Number one, and I am going to follow this up with a meeting with the parents and talk to them. If we changed whose bus time by ten minutes, ten minutes, which is not a lot, then we would be able, they would be able to drop the students and go on to the Acadia, and we would not have to change any of our other times. That's what we're looking at at this point. And I think that that is going to be what, and it's just that close, it's just that close. However, we have a school that's open now, and I have to tell you, the bus transportation is erratic. We were downstairs today waiting and waiting, four buses were at least thirty minutes late. Okay. But this is a high school, and it's, it's different. The students are resilient, they're okay. But we're going to do, we're going to do this anyway, but now we're going to do it until it's not necessary anymore. We're going to have a teacher on every bus in the morning and in the afternoon so that our parents can go to work, not have to worry about where their children are. Because even if the bus is running late, it's got your child and the teacher, and the teacher. And so because we cannot control the hiring of bus drivers and they raise their salaries, correct me, three dollars an hour? Okay. I think, and they think because they're beginning to have people to apply now. But this is a process, number one, you can't just drive a bus without a license. So I think that we need to keep teachers on the bus, buses until we make sure that we're on schedule because we have to protect our children. But I am projecting that about September fifteenth, et cetera, we should have settled. We should have settled. But what we're doing is the only thing that we can do, really. And, and that is to make sure that all children are safe. And that if a parent is sending a child to school, we know exactly where the, the child is. As you know, all of our buses have a tracking system. All of the buses, we can contact the radios, all of the teachers have cell phones. That's what we're going to do as long as it's necessary. But I think that, and the bus company is telling us that they believe that they might have brought sufficient people on by September fifteen. The issue is, we have fifty-two buses, fifty-two on the one sixty-two side. We're half of Kicker's business. Okay, all right. So do I think that they're doing all that they can? Absolutely, because they're in business to make money. They can't make money unless we do that. But I do want to ask the board to do something else that we have never done before. But just because it's never been done before, doesn't mean that we can't do it. So we've contacted another bus company. And if this bus company is able to serve us, then we're not asking you to approve a contract. I would like your permission to simply negotiate with another bus company if I can fill this void. So that is my ask of you because I feel that I don't want to be just dependent upon Kicker, although we've been with them for many years, and we're not saying we're doing anything. But we are saying that we need to open. And if we can negotiate a contract, we will certainly bring it back to you and have it approved. But I would like to ask for your permission to negotiate.
Board members, any comment?
Given.
All agree?
Agreed.
Okay, we will proceed and we will report back, as I usually do, to the board. I just feel that we always have to be careful. And for us to talk to another company that might be able to serve one of our schools, I think is to our benefit. It doesn't mean that we abandon anything because I know, well, I don't think, no, no, you don't think about the twenty-five years we've been with Kicker. What we think about is next Monday and the children going to school. That's where our focus is. So.
Davis, when is our regular contract up with Kicker? Or when do we have to go out to bid for the regular transportation?
So at this point in time, the district's in a year-to-year contract with Kicker. The district is required to go out to bid if another transportation company sent a letter requesting that the district bid at this point. If no letter is received, the district can either choose to go out to bid on its own or it can simply renew the existing contract. So we're not in any kind of long-term contract at this point.
Thank you.
But you know, over the years, and the city board members know that we've had some interactions with Kickered, and we took a stand. The stand resulted in them purchasing new buses for us. We don't have a problem with that. But right now, we must do everything possible to transport our students immediately to school. And so I appreciate your approving that. Are there other questions about all students will return in-person learning? We haven't had it in our community, but you're, you're watching it all on television. You have to be, you have to see what is going on. Our mandate from our governor and from our state superintendent was that all students would return to full-time in-person learning. That was the mandate. No, do you feel like it? Do you want to do it? No, that was the mandate that came down. It said, the only students that would be eligible for remote learning would be, number one, if you're too young to take the vaccine and you are quarantined by the Illinois Department of Public Health. We have no one that is in that category. If we did, then we are prepared immediately to offer remote education to anyone that's quarantined. That's not an issue. But the universe, by that I mean all of us, all eight hundred and sixty-two districts in the state of Illinois are mandated to go back into full in-person learning. In terms of full disclosure, we've only had one parent to question this. There is a difference between remote learning and home-based instruction. With remote learning, we are doing the teaching. If you decide to take your child out of our school and you decide to assume responsibility, that is a totally different thing. But remote learning, each of us, when I say each of us, I mean, all of the districts did this and we assume responsibility. But that is the mandate. And that is, number one, in-person learning, and that there are only two categories that we can continue with remote learning. That has nothing to do with students who might need Mrs. Williams' homebound training and hospitalized and that kind of thing, has nothing to do with it. Two different, entirely different things. We have our obligation and we will continue, and that's what we will do. But that education that occurs in a non-traditional setting is something that the doctor dictates. They dictate how long, what, what it's going to be. But that's not remote learning, that's not what that means. So everyone is moving in that direction. But I do compliment our community. I think it's going to be a wonderful reopening. You know that we reopen in a certain way, so there'll be balloons, there will be fanfare and at all of our schools. And we're really looking forward, you see everybody's face sitting here, and even though they're masked, you can look at their eyes. They can't wait, they're just not just looking that way because they're sitting in front of me. We're excited about going back to school. So questions that I can respond to about any of that? And then we're going to go on to instruction if we could. Thank you. How are you, Mrs. Calvin? Do you know, I always say that the middle school leads the way. Mrs. Calvin has heard me say that over and over again. So I'm extremely proud to welcome her and her staff as they begin our presentation. I think you have some questions to answer? Because we're guided by four questions this year. And, all right. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mrs. Calvin.
You're welcome. Good evening again, Dr. Davis, Board President Simpkins, and members of the Madison School District One Sixty-two Board of Education. I speak for all of the District One Sixty-two building administrators when I say it is truly a pleasure to present our school improvement plan to you this evening. We have been preparing the entire summer for the day when all of our students will walk through the doors of our buildings and bring laughter, joy, and happy energy back into our hallways. And we truly mean that, Dr. Davis. We're excited. I know my colleagues have been working hard and planning, but it's all in preparation for the big day, which is Monday, the twenty-third. During our summer planning, we have discussed the importance of being consistent across the district as it relates to our culture, climate, and our approach to instruction. During our administrative retreat, Dr. Davis posed four questions that not only we as administrators will consider on a daily basis, but also our teachers will consider as they plan instruction for our students. The questions are, what do we want all students to learn, and when do we expect them to learn it? How will we respond? How will we respond when students experience difficulty? How will we know when a student has mastered the essential skills? And how will we deepen knowledge and understanding of students that have mastered the essential skills? Over the next several minutes, you will hear my colleagues share the work that was piloted over the summer. They will be highlighting our instructional focus, which includes levels of questioning, assessment for learning, and learning plans. They will also discuss the development of quarterly pacing guides. They will discuss how we identify and track students who are having academic difficulties and our PBIS initiatives, which speaks specifically to our climate and culture in our school. Mr. Howard will begin with the instructional focus.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, board and Dr. Davis. Thank you for this opportunity. Ms. Calvin just spoke to us about the goals for each of our administrative teams as we worked together this summer, planning for the upcoming school year. An integral piece of this was our successful summer school program. The graphic on the screen represents the breakdown of the instructional focus during summer school and demonstrates how each component builds upon the other. Summer school was a great collaborative experience and opportunity to see it in action in regards to the learning plan transition. It allowed for exposure to what the specific asks were that the teachers were dealing with regarding the learning plan. And it was an opportunity for the teachers to further develop their understanding during this time. At our summer school site at Indiana, we had over two hundred students from five different schools. We also had staff from five different schools join us. This presented an opportunity to grow together and to navigate this process. And each of us returned to our buildings a stronger teacher and leader and someone who is able to help guide our grade-level teams that they are part of during the developmental process of these learning plans. As an administrative team, we saw this as an opportunity to strategize and look at best practices as a whole with our new summer school staff. As a group, the teachers came together and discussed topics such as, how are we going to present this material to reach all of our learners? How are we going to bring the students to mastery? And how do we know when they get there? As an administrative team, we saw this as an opportunity to see it in action and as a collaborative team to discuss and examine all the components of the learning plan. This summer school experience allowed us the opportunity to find a way to make it work in the most productive way as we transition from the traditional lesson plan template to the learning plan using the framework provided by Dr. Radner. We were able to form new PLCs with our summer school staff and as a group, really hone in on the instructional focus for the week, allowing for productive conversations regarding the topic of best instructional practices and what this looks like in our teachers' classrooms. Instructional walkthroughs were completed by the administrative teams, and together, we shared our findings with our staff during the weekly meetings. In addition to our learning targets being posted, so that the students have a clear understanding of exactly what's being asked of them, we also focused on some key components that make instruction more purposeful and intentional during our program. Those findings from our Week One staff meeting are displayed on the screen. These discussions served as good reminders to teachers, and the focus on these practices becomes even more important as our students start to transition back into the building, some of which have not been in a school for over a year and a half. This allows teachers to ensure that they are preparing each of their students for learning that day and setting the class up for successful and purposeful instruction to take place, allowing for the student needs to be better met in the process. Levels of questioning was the instructional focus for Week Two of our summer school experience. Having a thorough understanding of how effectively using questioning techniques in the classroom, along with their academic impact that they can have on their students, and the ability to process the information is crucial to our students. It is especially imperative that we present questions at all levels in order to build the capacity of our students and to make sure that they are prepared for whatever comes their way on an assessment. The IAR is notorious for presenting information to students in a different way, and it's our duty as educators to make sure that we have exposed them to all the resources that we have available to best prepare our students. Effective questioning techniques in the classroom allows teachers to gather important data that will help drive their instruction through the process, such as, who needs additional time on a concept? Or who has already mastered this and can be given the opportunity to extend their learning? Effective questioning techniques also lend themselves to helping promote healthy student discourse within the classroom, allowing for student voices to be heard, misconceptions to be cleared up, or ideas to be expounded on throughout their discussion. Another instructional focus during our summer school experience pertained to authentic assessment and what benefits both the teacher and the student see when this is done effectively in the classroom. Authentic assessment opportunities allow teachers the chance to provide extra support where needed, but also gives us as educators an idea of what students may need additional enrichment as well to stretch them further in their understanding. An example of this concept would be, students in need of extra support will receive, including but not limited to, extra time, extra practice, one-on-one teacher support, examples of higher-level work, and differentiated resources for the students.
Good evening, Dr. Davis and Board of Education. The introduction of the Illinois Priority Learning Standards document states that priority standards are meant to be a starting point for collaborative planning and discourse in every district. They should also be utilized as a guide to keep students and their learning at the center of all planning. This document from ISB is a great resource that will assist educators in being strategic and intentional as we contend with the unfinished learning and learning loss that is the result of the pandemic. Each of the respective schools at every grade level created pacing guides. The Richmond Square team created a weekly pacing assessment guide, which contains our TS Gold objectives that are aligned with the Illinois Early Learning Developmental Priority Standards. The log will be utilized as a way for teachers to track student mastery of the identified Illinois Early Learning Developmental Standards. All of the IELDS priority standards are on a six-week rotation, allowing the teachers to assess multiple points throughout the year, which will ensure students' retention and mastery of the standards.
Thank you, Ms. Parham. Good evening, Dr. Davis, Board of Education. Talk to you a little bit about the pacing guide and how that looks K-8. And really, when you're talking about the pacing guide, we're looking at it as, not only as a way to focus our instruction, but it helps answer those questions, mainly, what do we want all students to learn? And think of that pacing guide as, well, where do we want to go? And when will we get there? So, the pacing guide, very important, and I really can't really understate or overstate enough how wonderful it was to have the summer school experience that we did because we were able to bring together all the teachers from across the district and able to work on these pacing guides, grade level by grade level. So really, when we're looking at this, we used all the resources we had at our disposal. So collaboratively with the teachers and administrators, we were looking at the curriculum guides. We were looking at HMH in the reading. We were looking at the McGraw-Hill reveal math. Looking also too at those Illinois Priority Standards that Ms. Parham just talked about, how that's a starting point. And really, those are those standards that we really need to focus on for this upcoming year. Also, to assessment data, we were able to really take some of the assessment data from the STAR 360 that we've administered throughout the school year and through summer school. Also looking at not only historical IAR, Illinois Assessment or Readiness Data, but really what we could gather from the administration of that this past time too. Really, what you'll notice in the examples, you'll see in these pacing guides, weekly focus questions. You're going to see the connection to the priority standards and really an estimated time as to when this should be completed. The next example that you see is, you guys want to go back one? Yep, this one. This is a fourth-grade ELA learning plan. This is the other thing that, this is really the other item that we focused on tremendously over the summer and working as we get ready for this upcoming school year. Mr. Howard really talked about all the different focus points that we had throughout each week of the summer school. Really, what you're seeing, though, you're going to see it all come together in these learning plans. And really what's consistent with this is we're using this, the format and this template developed by Dr. Radner and making it work no matter the grade level and no matter the subject area. So you'll see that consistency. You'll notice that there's a focus for the week. You're going to notice the essential questions, and also the essential vocabulary terms that are going to be important as the students learn throughout the week. And you notice there's a nice flow with it. So Monday, we start with a preview, remodeling. And we're going to go all the way through until we do the assessment and the fix at the end of the week. But so there's that flow. So the Monday focus turns into a fix-it Friday. And the fix-it Friday became one of the things that the teachers, I think I don't remember which teacher came up with that, but the fix-it Friday was where we're going to take that assessment data and we're going to make whatever changes we needed to make with that and help those students really finish well. So, again, Monday, we're going to talk about, you know, a time to preview, a time for the teacher to model, establish that focus for the week. Tuesday, we're getting into the guidance, more modeling if needed. Wednesday, this guidance is designed to delve deeper into the learning. And Thursday is the assess and clarify. And I really want to point out that this is really the biggest shift for our teachers and for us as educators. We have been accustomed to working throughout the week and assessing at the end of the week. So a lot of the, front-loading a lot of that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Let's see how much of that, you know, let's see where the students, what they've been able to gather from that week. We assess on Friday, and we go from there. Well, this shift to assessing on Thursday opens up that fix-it Friday. Because now, if a student did not get the, you know, did not get that focus for the week or was not able to clearly show the mastery, we're not waiting Saturday and Sunday to come back to it on Monday. We're able to come back to it the next day. So, really, that was one of the things that, as educators, we were sure how that was going to, you know, how that ship was going to come about. But really, with the teachers working together this summer, a lot of them had said that they really like the way that this flows because, again, you're able to attend to a lot of the changes that might be needed on that Friday. So, really, Thursday, huge day, assess and clarify. Because, again, Thursdays too, we know a majority of the students will be there. And then we'll be able to take care of that on Friday, whatever that might be. Because fix-it Friday is not just for those students who didn't get it. It's going to be for those students who did master it, and we want to extend that or stretch them. So we'll be able to challenge them through some extension activities as well. So, fix-it Friday, whatever you need to fix or whatever you need to stretch, either way, everyone's going to finish well. In this next example, you'll see a math learning plan. And really, what we like about this example is that it captures all that we love about the transformation from lesson planning to learning planning. You're going to notice that throughout there, it's going to provide challenges for students. It's going to give students choice. Also, it's going to provide a consistent feedback loop for not only the teachers and students. So really, it's going to be designed to keep this learning moving forward. So what you'll see from the feedback, teachers will be able to take that, be able to make those changes as needed, and really be able to meet students where they're at. From this example and from all the examples that we've been putting together, you'll notice a gradual release of responsibility. The teacher starts with something that I do or I demonstrate, moves on to what we are going to do as a class collaboratively, and finishes with what the student will do, or you do. And the you do is going to take different forms. It just depends on what that ask is going to be. Is the, are they going to be working together with a small group or a partner? Or is it going to be something individual, an individual task? So that you do can change. Also, you can, you'll see that for the fix and finish or the fix-it Friday, you're going to see that there's going to be activities for those students who might be struggling still and activities for those students who are meeting and exceeding. But either way, looking at it from this way, the learning plan is giving every student the opportunity to succeed. I'm going to turn it over now to Dr. May.
Good evening, Dr. Davis, Board of Education. We talk about good-sound curriculum has everything to do with improving the tiered instruction. There are four key components or action steps to improving instruction at our schools. How will we know when each student has mastered essential learning? We have methods, universal screening. All students are screened. Pre-K screening is gold. K through three, STAR 360, we have formative and summative assessments. Mathematical facts assessed every two weeks with weekly data meetings to identify who needs instructional and behavioral support or interventions. To include the mathematics team and weekly grade-level articulation meetings with the teams. If the results indicate that students are not meeting standards, those students will receive appropriate interventions and differentiated instruction in the classroom to meet their individual needs. Academic support is what you see. You see our three tiers here in example. Response to intervention. This is to include the tiered model that provides interventions to students depending on the level of intensity of support needed by the individual student. The table on the screen details how tiered instruction might look for our grades. This is an example of a reading triangle. Teaching strategies for this might include usage of note-taking, strategies for teachers to deepen students' understanding, and it can be used to enhance the rigor of the curriculum as well. Inquiry-based learning, research projects, field work, like balancing your checkbook was a story that I told at retreat. I had to make the math lesson apply to my life because I did not like math. Game-based learning. Students work towards a goal, choosing actions, experiencing the consequences of those actions. They actively learn and practice the right way to do things. Cooperative learning, discovering concepts together in small groups. And problem-based learning, again, those real-life situations that will promote their learning. One of the things during the retreat this summer, I had the opportunity to work at both the Madison and the Hoot. And one of the things that the Hoot team came up with, which was brilliant, was a watch list. How are we going to know when our students are sliding between the cracks? We are going to keep a watch list, and an example of that would be the child's name, the teacher, their attendance record, their STAR data, grades that they're missing assignments in, or maybe failing grades. But we wanted to talk about, why is this important? It's a very helpful way of collecting data. Assessments, both summative and formative can be recorded on here. You can include student samples to give you that kind of informal assessment. But what it also does is it improves teacher instruction. If you have a stack of these and you see that you have a great percentage of your students on the watch list, we need to go back and look at the teacher. We need to, for the teacher, to do some self-examining and correcting along with administration. It also ensures achievement because we don't want to get to the situation where it's the end of the quarter and all of a sudden, a child is in danger. We want to help fast, and we want to help immediately. It also identifies students that are at risk early. And we plan to do this after our first benchmark and continue it throughout the year. The other thing that we talked about with goals and with our RTI and student achievement is allowing students to set realistic goals for themselves. If a child is not a part of the goal-setting conversation with the teacher the first couple of weeks of school, this is where you were last year on your STAR 360. Where do you think we can go? So they need to be an intricate part of that. The other key component is including the parents in the articulation of the students' goals. So after the first benchmark of our STAR 360, we do plan to have parents come in or even via Zoom or whichever way works so that we can have articulation with support for the parents on how we can help your child to succeed.
Mr. President, if I could, I'd like to acknowledge the fact that we're now having a presentation by Dr. Healy. Could we possibly give a round of applause?
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Good evening, Board of Education. I'm so excited. This is the part that I love to speak about because, starting this school year, all seven schools are going to implement positive behavior incentives and supports, which is PBAS. And the heart of PBAS really stands for our academic, our social-emotional learning, as well as our behaviors. So what does that mean? We're still going to celebrate our student successes, but now, we're going to give them the tools that they but now we're going to give them the tools that they need in order to alleviate any barriers that they have to their instruction. So having a school-wide behavioral approach really allows everyone to be there. So the administration, the teachers, of course, but the community, the parents, the bus driver, the custodians, our peer professionals, our students are going to know that every single person in this school, in the school community is there for our children and there for their success. So what does it look like in the schools? Well, each school, the first thing we did was to define our school-wide positive expectations and behaviors. So every school did a survey with their staff as well as with some of their students in order to figure out what our core values are. What they did was to define the core values. What is it in your school that you need to do in order to be a productive and successful student? So each school is a little bit different, but at Richson Square, they have the Richson Way. They are safe, they are kind, and they are responsible. At Arcadia, we asked the question, what kind of print does your paw make? Well, it's a bear's paw, of course. Be kind, engaged, accepting, responsible, and safe. At Madison, how will you earn your eagle wings? Well, they're going to soar at the Madison. They are going to be safe and successful, on time and optimistic, accountable and adventurous, respectful and responsible. At Illinois, they make the statement, the lone wolf is only as strong as the pack. Pride in self in school, act responsible and safe, committed to excellence and kindness. Salk, they're going to soar because they show up, own up, aim up, and rise up. And Indiana, those Wildcats are going to roar. They respect, they're organized, they're always safe and they're responsible. At Hoof, they're always lovely because they respect themselves, others, and their school. So each school has their own acronym and their own set of values and core values. The next step is to take those core values and to create a matrix. So it was a grid of expectations. What it does is take out any of the guesswork. And there's a few examples up there. But for each matrix, what it is, is how am I supposed to behave in different places in this school? In terms of the hallway, in the classroom, even in the bathrooms and on the bus? How am I going to behave and how am I going to be a citizen of my school? So that ultimately I can be successful. From there, the second piece of that was to go into our data tracking system to make sure that we were able to meet our students' needs in terms of interventions. So we each created a document that would allow us to track students to see what made them successful in what they do. Taking those two documents, every single teacher, every teacher across the entire district created a classroom matrix and the classroom matrix reflects their school and their school's core values. The reason we put the one we did up there was you can see that no matter what grade you're in, pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, all the way through eighth grade, you are still part of the PBAS system and you can be a part of it. So that's why you see more of the pictures for the younger kids. So this is my favorite part. Is the continuum of procedures for encouraging expected behavior. When you act as a citizen in the school, whether it be academically, socially, emotionally, or behaviorally, what does that mean? So at Richson Square, they have a fuzzy jar. So every single time a student at Richson Square follows the expectations in one of those categories, they get a fuzzy for their classroom. And then they fill up their fuzzy jars all across the school and as a team, they will celebrate their success. And so you see the little fuzzy jar. At Arcadia and Madison, we have eagle wings and skywiz and leaders badges, just depending how much school you're in. And so each time that you demonstrate the qualities of either an Arcadia bear or a Madison eagle, you will get either a bear's paw or an eagle buck. And you're going to work towards being an ambassador at that school. Someone who really shows all of the qualities of that school and you get to wear your badge proudly. At Illinois and Indiana, they have school stores because that is their tradition. You can either visit the Wolves' Den or the Wildcats' Den. So you see a picture of that as well. At Salk, you have a whole menu of incentives that you get to choose from in order to demonstrate what you've done and how you represent Salk Eagles. And at Hoof, they play bingo, which really goes along with that age level. So getting the kids involved and game-playing and social, emotional learning and working together as a team. So during the month of September, we will kick off PBAS with lessons with each of our expectations. For each of the weeks, we will review our expectations daily. Each week we'll focus on a different theme or letter of our acronym. And the reason we're so excited about this is that implementing this initiative really gives us the framework that will allow us to maintain a positive school culture and climate.
Good evening, Dr. Davis, Board of Education. Cabinet and everybody in the house. I think I covered everybody, right? I think I speak for all of my colleagues when I say that our approach is always to plan with the end in mind, which is why we started with Ms. Calvin and these four questions. And then we went on, those questions being our expectations. And then we went on to talk about our instructional focus from Mr. Howard, our pacing guys from Ms. Parham, Mr. Hughesman. We talked about tiered supports and, and our watch lists with Dr. Mays. And then we ended with our PBIS and supports from Dr. Healy. So knowing where we're going and knowing the questions we want answers to really helps us to focus on the solution as well as what the direction we want to take. And there's that word again, direction. So you know, you know me, right? I'd, I'd like to go out on a limb right here and just say that, like me, I'm sure many of you utilize the GPS system whenever you travel. Yes? Yes? All right. And like me, I'm sure it gives you a sense of assurance or confidence whenever you're in your travels or your journey. Knowing where you're going, how you'll get there, and that ETA, that estimated time of arrival. Am I right? Great. So this is, I, I like to use that analogy when I'm trying to pull together exactly what we do. So for example, if I gave an example to, if I put Walmart in my, in my GPS right now, what will come up is, first of all, I indicate my current, my current location, which would be right here, and then it will show me where I'm going to Walmart. And then it'll go on to say, how do you get there? It'll say, go down Highway thirty to get to Walmart. And then there it is again, that ETA, estimated time of arrival. Then I can go a step further and I can put in here something like outstanding elementary school near me. Well, you know Salk is going to come up, right? Or I can put the number one high school or the number one school district near me. You get my point. So when it comes to these questions that we see here, what do we want all students to learn and when do we expect them to learn it? We're talking about a destination here. So the answer to that is we want students to learn the skills identified by the Illinois Priority Standards prior to IAR. Then it goes on to ask, how will we respond when students experience difficulty? Now, if you know anything about the GPS, this is when it starts to reroute or recalibrate. Because if you fall off or if you have students that have difficulty, you need to get back on track. And so this is that reroute or that recalibration. And then we go on to say, we will use data gathered to revisit, rethink, intervene, or enrich. This will be supported by our varied approaches, included, as Dr. Mays said, watch list, intervention, and that Power Hour approach that we all use. The next question asks, how will we know when a student has mastered these central skills? Well, that's that ETA right there. That estimated time of arrival. If we ask, how will we know when the students have mastered? This is when that content or the grade level teams come together to utilize those common assessments for learning and assess weekly as well as using those benchmarks regularly. And then finally, there's that, how will we deepen knowledge and understanding of students that have mastered these central skills? Well, we will give students opportunities to make learning personal and valuable through content-based challenges. Mr. President, this is when we see it through. Okay? The more we thought about these questions, we concluded that these questions can ju, can't just rest with us, the administrators, but that our teachers must consider these questions on a daily basis as they plan and deliver instruction. So to help us reach our destination, our commitment is to ensure that these very same questions are posted in all of our buildings in some way or another. And to continue to work to have our students to begin to own their own learning by asking themselves these very same questions and commit to seeing it through. All right?
You almost got an amen. In fact, that is an amen. I like that analogy.
Mr. President, it's our pleasure to present to you our learning plan for the year. We stand ready to answer any questions. A big part of this i- is really going to be how our children return to us because we really have not seen them and we have not had the opportunity to interact with them for over a year. I'm happy to say that our older students, I don't feel that COVID destroyed their sense of being. I don't think that, that COVID has been internalized by them. I, I feel that they are embracing the concept of coming back to the schools. But the younger the child, that's one of the things that must be done. And so in our buildings, we have more counselors and social workers to have those conversations and to identify. But we are centered on those four questions that were shared with you by all of the administrators. You may think, why are we going to do a small assessment on Thursday? You know, we think it's an awful thing. First of all, we're not doing lesson plans. We're doing learning plans. So that's a shift. But normally, we give a test on Friday and a child, let's say that you didn't do so well, Sandy, and you've got this F, so you go home and there you're home with your mother. But what if we do an assessment on Thursday? We can reteach and you can go home and feel successful on Friday because you've been home for a long time. You've been home for a long time. And we don't know how you're thinking about this, but learning is a process. And so this gives us a chance to reteach, recalibrate, as one teacher said, fix it Friday. So that's one of the reasons that we're looking at a reorganization of our time. But we're very much looking forward to all of our children and receiving them ages three through eighteen. That's our target, three to eighteen. If you need us, we're there for you. But our teachers really, they're so courageous, they're so committed, that I feel certain that it's going to be an excellent educational year. But we're happy to respond to any questions. So.
Any board member question? Mr. Bean, given the fact that we've had this year where the, the learning levels have been unequal, what assessment will you make as a student first comes into class to see where they are?
For the younger children, we're going to use star three sixty. As the children get older, we will use the PSAT. And we don't have that information. We don't know where the, the gaps are. We have some information about the high school, the summer school. But more children who were on the hybrid attended summer school. If you were keeping your children at home, those weren't the children that we saw in summer school. And so that's what we're looking at. We have to, to look at the totality. So we're looking at some all-test days. We also know that the tests that we gave on remote probably, probably are not an authentic indication of what happened at home and where the children are. So we do need an assessment of all students as they return to school. We're not going to test that first week. We're going to do three weeks, let them settle in. This is a readjustment. This is a readjustment. And we think that by the third week of school, we'll be able to get an assessment data that gives us a true picture of where the students are and therefore we can plan to move on. But absolutely, our preliminary data and our knowledge of education, math and science, math and science, math and science.
So I do have a question here. I want to know, does the instructional plan differ substantially from what was happening before with lesson planning? Because I know excellence has always been the standard. So I'm wondering, you know, because I don't have, I'm not privy to the prior lesson plan that happened for when students were in person. Does this, you know, it, to me, it doesn't feel like it probably deviates substantially? Is there some substantial difference that maybe we can be made privy to?
I don't think it does, other than the timing, the pacing, the goals are the same because they are the Illinois State standards. But what is new to us is the emphasis on the affective domain. Always, we've had, I think, a strong connection with our families and our children. That's why we're using our climate and culture grant that we had to purchase more more celebration kinds of things, more things to encourage the children, investing more in staff. That's how we're paying for our psychologists, our social workers, our counselors, that side of the house. But what 162 has always been is a very strong district in terms of the humanities, language arts, English, et cetera. I'm not, I don't see that that's going to be the place where we struggle. But I'll give you a good example. We did during Freshman Academy, a test with our freshmen. Do you know, you probably, we learned place value at fourth or fifth grade. This child had been home for two years. He couldn't remember. He couldn't remember and he's first year high school. So we have to find out where they are and we'll, we can't necessarily teach by grade level. I think that's another difference. Most, all of our children last year, you know, by directive of the governor, went up a grade level. Okay, that does not mean that if they were in school, that that would have necessarily been what we did, but that's what we did. And most of the children this year, that was the same thing. But what we're going to have to do based on that assessment, and it's never been necessary before, you might have the numerate grade, sixth grade, but we might be giving you fourth grade material and then fifth grade and bring, we, we have to look at it from that way. It's not what grade you're in, it's the knowledge base that you have. And so that is a major deviation from what we've done in the past. But it could be that in some cases, you've lost two years. And we have to start there. You know, we've always emphasized instruction on grade level. It's not going to be the case. It's, it's going to have to be instruction child by child based on where you are at the time.
And that's where the pacing charts come in because it's to help, help the teachers keep all that data together so that we can move them forward at their pace and, and that.
And that's another reason we're keeping our class sizes as low as we can because this is going to be And that's another reason we're keeping our class sizes as low as we can, because this is going to be a process. Suppose in your class, you know, we're accustomed to addressing three different grade levels, three different learning units. But suppose a gap is greater. We can't say that. And so, Mrs. Williams has a group of young people. They're cadre teachers. They're there in all of our schools. They're young people that graduated from college. Many of them came out of Southland, but they're going to be of help to the teachers in the classroom. We think that we're going to do, have to do a lot of small group work because it can't be that everyone that was on remote is, the deficits are the same. So you're going to have to do some small group work. But I'm more than hopeful. I'm confident. But first, we have to get them back into school and we have to give a comprehensive assessment to find out exactly where we are. But I would like, Mr. President, if I could, would be to come back after that assessment and give you information about where the students actually are. Because that then is our foundation and we build upwards from there.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Ms. McCray.
Well, I would like not to speak so loud. I would like to really compliment you and the staff on the collaboration. I was thinking back to the Hamburger University days when the C-word was the worst thing that could ever, ever happen. But now, looking at the plan for instruction and seeing across the district, all the teachers are starting off on the same foot, same foot going in the same direction for the students, and it's just, it's excellent. It is an excellent structural plan. And I'm just going to congratulate the leaders here because I can see nothing but progress, exceptional progress. And the students are so in need right now to come back home and be where they need to be and get what they need to have. And we thank you from the community. I'm thanking you.
Thank you, Mrs. McCray.
Dr. Davis, I was just listening to everything that was said. And I thought about just the totality of the assessment that you're doing in the beginning. I think it's extremely important, as we have learned some things over at the college, about assessing the students coming in, just the thought process that you put into it, your team put into it, even taking data that you had already peeked inside in from the summer. I was encouraged by the number of students who did show up for the summer. And now you have a plan. It's student-focused, it's student-centered, and you're not having a plan just going to just meet them at the door and then drop them off. It's a plan that's going to walk them through the whole semester. That is encouraging. That is encouraging.
Well, another aspect of this, remember, we have the 21st Century Grant. And so, on Saturday, it will look like we're fully in session, except we will be ages five through eighteen. If you need help, then we're, we have a whole cadre of teachers that will come in and give you that kind of help on a Saturday. And parents have been responsive in the past. I think they'll be extremely excited in order to bring them in on Saturday so that they can begin to catch up. And so, those two grants, I think, have given us so many opportunities. That's the way I feel about it.
Thank you, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, sir.
Board members, if you don't mind, can we give her, Dr. Davis and her staff just a hand? Because that was awesome. Thank you, team. At this time, if that is it, Dr. Davis?
No legislation. I'm sorry.
At this time, we entertain new business. Motion, please.
Move to approve the promotion of Ms. Jamie Goodley from her former position of Assistant Director of Special Education and Student Support Services to the position of Director of Special Education effective August 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
Second?
It's been moved in second. Any comments?
Yes, Mr. President. Mrs. Goodley has been with our district for some years. And she has a Director of Special Education endorsement. She has an MA in Educational Administration from Governor's State, an MA in Psychology, because that's where she started her career, also from Governor's State, and a BS in Psychology from the University of Illinois. I'm sorry, the University of Louisville. But these are just degrees that she has. I'm going to ask Mrs. Yvonne Williams, who has a new title now. She's our title now investigator. But she knows a different side of Mrs. Goodley. Who is Mrs. Goodley? And what are the characteristics that she has that makes her an excellent, excellent special education director?
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Davis, and my colleagues here. It is with such great pleasure that I have this opportunity to support the superintendent's recommendation of Mrs. Goodley to a position of Director of Special Education. So when I came to the district, I don't know how many years ago it's been now, lost track. But anyway, Mrs. Goodley was one of the people that I noticed right away. I was in awe of her as a school psychologist at both Arcadia and Indiana School. There was something about her. She, when she spoke to parents, and as you know, in special education, you work with parents of children who have special learning needs. She was always professional. She always used professional language. But in her explanation of the results of testing, she made sure everyone in the group understood. I always considered my participation in IEP meetings with Mrs. Goodley as learning experiences. It was almost like a mini workshop. You learn more about child growth and development. Mrs. Goodley is dependable. She is the person who, when you expect something to happen, it will happen. There's no drama. It gets done. And everybody wants a Mrs. Goodley in their school. So when we had the opportunity to move her from working with one or two schools to the district office a couple of years ago, so that she could have an effect on all the schools, it was with pleasure that we were able to do that. And now we have another opportunity. As the team has expressed and has, and as Dr. Davis has shared with us, this is the year that we really want to make sure that we are covering our bases in terms of student needs. Mrs. Goodley, as a school psychologist, certainly brings that expertise to the district office level and gives us that balance of people who have background in instructional development and looking at learning gaps, to looking at the broader picture of a child as a whole, a family as a whole. And Mrs. Goodley is that person. One of the things that she brings to this position with her 20 years of experience here in the district is that she has become a generational figure. It's not uncommon for Mrs. Goodley to say, oh, I taught her mother. Or I know her grandmother. She is part of the community. She, people know her in the community. They trust her. I have often, in my position in the district office, had people ask, could Mrs. Jamie Goodley be part of my child's team? I know her. I trust her. And that's what she brings to us, Dr. Davis. I've witnessed her skill development over the years that I've been here. There's nothing she won't do to address the needs of children. There's just nothing. She's creative. She is, I'll use the word, dependable, but that is so true. When you need something done, you call Mrs. Goodley. So it's with my pleasure, Dr. Davis, that I support your recommendation to the board for the promotion of Jamie Goodley as the Director of Special Education.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Simpkins, she has my absolute support. And it is a pleasure for me to bring her name to the board and ask that she get leadership in the position of Director of Special Education.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. We had the motion. It's been second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bean? Mrs. Gordon?
Aye.
Mrs. McCray?
Aye.
Dr. Leatherwood? Mr. Simpkins?
Aye.
Mr. President, Mrs. Goodley, would you please share some thoughts?
Good evening. Dr. Davis and members of the Board of Education, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to serve as the Director of Special Education. I am both delighted and honored to continue the charge of serving the communities of District 162, our students, and families. I pledge to work tirelessly to promote the district's mission of excellence as the standard and excelling beyond excellence. To the Special Education and Pupil Services Team, Mrs. Williams, Mrs. Dusky, Mrs. Porchbox, and Mrs. Dixon, thank you. To the building leadership teams that I've had the pleasure of working with during my tenure, the journey continues. This past year has been one like, one like we've never seen before. Challenges were faced at every turn. More than ever, the core values of collaboration and collegiality were on full display in Madison 162. As we welcome students back to our schools, we have embraced the opportunity to redefine nurturing learning environments, high-quality, rigorous instruction, and data-driven decision-making. I look forward to partnering with you to empower our students to achieve success while navigating life's detours. Again, thank you.
Congratulations. Mr. Bean?
Move to approve the motion, Mrs. Rebecca Atkins Dixon, from her former position of Special Education Administrator, position of Assistant Director of Special Education effective August 1, 2021, through June 30, 2022.
It's been moved in second. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mrs. Dixon is relatively new to us, and I say that because three years. But in three years, I have seen magnificent, magnificent growth. And so, I thank you for all that you've done for our children. But educationally, Mrs. Dixon has two bachelor's degrees, actually. A Bachelor of Science in Psychology and a Bachelor of Arts in Sociology, both from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. She has a Master's of Arts in Psychology from Governor's State, a Master of Arts in School Leadership from Concordia, and she's currently working on her PhD in Special Education Leadership. So, instructionally, she's well-prepared also. But Mrs. Dixon is really more than that. And Mrs. Williams, could you please?
With great pleasure. As Dr. Davis, you know, I have not known Mrs. Dixon for very long. But what I do know and what I've observed about her is that she is compassionate and caring about children and families. That is what she's all about. One of the roles that she serves currently is that she is our liaison for homeless education. And let me tell you how seriously she takes that. She will go anywhere to get children clothing, food, school supplies, helping families find housing. I've seen her in the parking lot, just going different places early in the morning, on the weekends, as she tells me about her pursuit of finding the resources to support the families who are in need. Just recently, there was a fire in Richton Park, an apartment building. Mrs. Dixon worked with each family affected by the fire to make sure that the family, not only the children, the family, had all the necessary things that they needed to survive. She's that person who goes the extra mile. I won't even tell them, Mrs. Dixon, about the time you drove all the way to the end of the state, following up on a family that was relocating. But she wanted to make sure that the new place where they went had all the resources. Because she told them, you have an option. You can come back home. So she's that person you want in your corner. As Dr. Davis says, she's a lifelong learner and she's a lifelong teacher because she shares what she knows with all of those who are lucky enough to be a part of her team. And so, I consider the 162 team very fortunate to have Mrs. Dixon.
Thank you. We had the motions. They're moved in second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bean?
Aye.
Mrs. Gordon?
Aye.
Mrs. McCray?
Aye.
Dr. Leatherwood?
Aye.
Mr. Simpkins?
Aye.
Mrs. Dixon, please. Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to begin by saying that I am thrilled to find myself entrusted with the role of Assistant Director of Special Education. And although I've only been here a short time, I feel that I've grown so much and learned so much from this community and from the family. As I assume this responsibility, my excitement is matched with deep gratitude. And I would like to expressly thank Dr. Davis and the Board of Education for entrusting me with this opportunity as I continue to travel on my professional journey. I am also particularly thankful for Mrs. Yvonne Williams, who has helped to mentor me over the past three years, Mrs. Debbie Dusky, and my fellow team members, Mrs. Porchbox and Mrs. Goodley, along with all the building leadership who has worked with me and helped me as I have grown in my endeavors. I would also like to say that I eagerly look forward to celebrating the achievements of our present and past students as we build in this district for a better future for 162, aspiring for the best of our traditions that bind us together in the pursuit of the missions of excellence in education that we strive for. With hard work, faith, and unwavering devotion, it is my endeavor to work with you on the next chapter in the district's unparalleled history of service, cause, and education. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, congratulations.
Mr. President, we have a text message from a member, Kevin Murphy. He would like us, I mean, to share with the board that he has just raised $2,000 for the district. But he said in particular, he looks for this weekend, Mrs. Goodley and Mrs. Dixon, and buying things for homeless children. And he would like to be communicated with. But thank you, Mr. Murphy. He's always thinking of us, and he was monitoring our meeting. And so, they did go last year and buy supplies for homeless children. But he's just raised $2,000, which is twice what he raised last year. So, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Mr. President?
Mr. Bean?
I'd like to read the next motion. Move to approve the extension of the superintendent's contract.
Second? It's been moved in second. Roll call, please.
Mr. President, I believe that I am the only board member that has served concurrently with the term of the superintendent. I believe I was here when we first began interviewing you. And I've been here in the years that you have served. And I just want to say that I, I guess people say that my profession is school board member. I'm on three school boards. But there is no school board and no service that I experienced that I pleasure more than service here. And I think all of this is summed up in an article that Mr. Fountain wrote in Sun Times over the weekend, where he says that, in interviewing Dr. Davis, she says her exemplar and model is, may the life I live speak she says her exemplar and model is, may the life I live speak for me. And I think that the, the voice that she's used in speaking for this district has set a, a, an example and a passion that is exactly what we need in this time and place. And it's my pleasure to move for your extension of the contract. And I hope that I'm here 20 more years extending your contract.
Any other board members, please?
I just wanted to comment, Mr. Bean, that I too have been here with you, although I was not at the, the meeting with Dr. Davis when the interview took place. But we both came in on the board at the exact same time. When you brought her in, I came in as well. So we both are elder members, but you're older than me.
Any other board member like to make a comment?
Mr. President. Mr. Leatherwood. I, I believe, because I'm new, I think this might be a nice space to, to, to jump in and say a few words about Dr. Davis. Even though I'm new, there's no surprise at all about the excellence that is you, Dr. Davis. I've known quite, for quite a while, because I've been here as a resident. And I, my, my little guys went to Matson, my, my oldest. So I've known quite a while about your reputation and the fact that this school district is one of the best performing school districts in the country, especially on the outcomes that we really care about. And it's because of your leadership, I believe, and the leadership, the collaboration that you, you know, that you engage with these amazing administrators, faculty, staff, all involved, that our students, our children are so fortunate to learn and to grow and to develop. So I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart, not, not just as a board member. I'm new, brand new, I, I didn't come in those many years ago, but I'm here now. And I'm so excited to learn with you from these board members, with the team, the family. And I'm just extraordinarily excited about the potential of improving and, and continuing to grow our little ones all over, you know, all over the place where we have stewardship. So I just want to say thank you. Your example is amazing and I look so forward to being a part of the solution that is educating our young people.
Well, I'd just like to take a look at those of you, the team that you have assembled, Dr. Davis, and everything that you've done to keep us innovative. And I think that this challenge of COVID has just brought our district so much to a higher level because of everything that you guys have done. And I am, as always, I say every year, grateful to be a part of the team as well in our, in our roles as board members. So thank you again, and I'm looking forward to hearing all the excitement from the teachers as they get to really grasp the instructional onsite learning again with the kids. I think that's going to be, I think this is going to be a really great treat for everybody to be back together again. So thank you.
Well, Dr. Davis, and most of you guys, you know that I always consider Dr. Davis to be Phil Jackson. I will not attempt to determine which one of you guys, Michael Jordan, Scottie Pippen and the rest of the crew. But what I will say is that one of the things that is exciting about Phil Jackson, which is just as about Dr. Davis, is the desire for, the push for, the commitment from the team, excellence, winning excellence. She has no tolerance for par, it has to be excellent. And that is what makes me excited about the district. I mean, I don't brag about the district, I do hint to people about the district, about what we do and subsequent to high school, that this board was instrumental and with Dr. Davis and the team in, in bringing forth. Because one of my things that I believe is that unfortunately, some school districts do not take educating kids seriously. It's, it's a pet peeve of mine, because I know how I was educated and some of the shoring up, and you guys heard me talk about the foundation. Dr. Davis is just staunch about foundation. And we just witnessed today her desire to have an assessment before you even walk in the building. She wants to know where all of her kids, from the babies all the way to the high school, where they are day one, day one. That is an excellent and a commitment to excellence for children's success. And we know that if you educate a child and you teach them how to make it, they'll be successful. And Dr. Davis, thank you for that commitment. We know you love your kids. And I mean, you'll stay here all day if you have to, and that is commitment. And we thank you for it. Thank you, Dr. Davis. Can we give a round of applause? It has been moved in second, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bean.
Aye.
Mrs. Gordon.
Aye.
Mrs. McCray.
Aye.
Dr. Leatherwood.
Aye.
Mr. Simpkins.
Aye.
And so, Dr. Davis, on behalf of the board, we would like to present you with these flowers for your continued excellence.
I could, Mr. President, and I, you know, it's, Mr. Bean knows, I'm, I'm not a person that likes compliments. And so I guess when I look at my life at this point, the only thing I really know absolutely is that it is my destiny to fight this through. It's, it's my destiny, I know that I, I must at this time, because we have a challenge. And I know that, I'll just say very simply, and, and maybe everyone is, is not there in terms of, of your personal beliefs. But the only thing that is important to me is that one day I'll meet my mother again. And I want her to be able to say, well done, my daughter, well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Neo-business. Board members' reports of issues. Audience to visitors. Hearing none, I hope there's cake and all that good stuff, Dr. Davis. This board meeting is adjourned.